Okay, all set?
Yes, we're all good.
Fantastic, thank you. Good evening, I'm calling this public meeting to order in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC 131, Section 40, and the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code Ordinance is Chapter 7-1.4. Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public hearing this evening on February 7th, 2024, to review the following projects, to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land-containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's hearing will be followed by our regular meeting. In accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online to ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission. The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, sorry, it's something in my eye. Cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle @BostonEnviron and using the hashtag #ConConHearing. For the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Could staff please identify themselves?
Elena Etimary with the Environment Department.
DeeDee Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Okay, thank you. Call the role of Commissioners present this evening. Commissioner Sullivan?
John Sullivan.
Commissioner Wilson? Nope. Is he not with us tonight? I don't see his picture.
He will not be coming tonight.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Condon?
Condon to ring him.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
Anne Herbst.
Great, myself. Okay, first item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP file number 0061973 and Boston file number 2023-063 from Fort Point Associates on behalf of the Esplanade Association for the proposed construction of a new welcoming destination located at 280 Charles Street in the west end of Boston. Resource areas are 25-foot riverfront and waterfront areas and 100-foot buffer to bank. This is continued from the November 15th, 2023 hearing. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you, Chair Parker. My name is Katie Moniz and I'm with Fort Point Associates. We're here tonight on behalf of our client, the Esplanade Association, and memberships of the Esplanade Association and their consultants are with me tonight.
Great, thank you, Katie. So I think where we left this was we are still in the discussions with DCR regarding orders of conditions, both generally and then specifically applied to this project. You provided some red lines. You and I think Counsel for EEA have provided us some red line comments. I just saw them probably, I don't know, 15 minutes ago. So I've gone through and I have responded to almost all of your comments. And so I think the best course of action is to have these sent back to you so you can digest them and continue that discussion as we're still continuing the discussion with DCR generally. One thing that I thought we should discuss this night, tonight, was Condition 60 regarding the BWSC storm drains or BWSC-owned infrastructure. So I've sent, Commissioner Sullivan has looked at, or is looking at, Condition 60. And so to start it off, could you give us some flavors to why you've made that change?
Sure, and just for context here, I think important to clarify, and we hope these changes are acceptable, that we do have a slightly unique situation here, which is the applicant is responsible for a portion of the Esplanade, but not for the Esplanade itself as a larger property. So we've proposed those changes in which to delineate clearly what the applicant can control. And in particular, for item number 60, differentiating where our contributions may go into infrastructure owned by DCR versus Boston Water and Sewer. No objection.
Okay, and I know I asked you to talk about 60, but since you brought up the other issue of the project site itself, to give you a preview of what I did, I actually, first off, did not want to introduce a new plan that had not been introduced at the hearing as an attachment to the Order of Conditions. Otherwise, we would have to reopen, not reopen, it is open, but that's something that wasn't considered in the record. So would not want to put that in there at this point. As far as the project site, I think it's clear in this Order of Condition, in any Order of Conditions, that we issue that the project site is the property, as it says in the first condition. And the property is what is depicted on the site plans that are given to us during the hearing, what we consider during the hearing, and also the narrative in your NOI. So from my perspective, and we can talk about this further, you can go back and forth, I think, with staff in the future, but from my perspective, to change property to something more specific like project site, one, it's not necessary, and two, it's a bit confusing. Three, as you can imagine, these are standard conditions. A lot of these are standard conditions. And to change standard conditions to, you know, not so much accommodate requests, but change standard conditions is problematic for us, number one. But number two, to change them for what I would consider not necessary to do just opens the door for us to have more discussions about changing our standard conditions, which I'll quote Commissioner Sullivan, his famous words, "We're very loathe to do that." So I just want to give you that preview when you get my comments back to you. So let's go back to Condition 60.
Could I just ask one brief question because you did kind of, obviously, there has been a lot of negotiation here between staff working with us and DCR working with us. You noted that you were not comfortable with the plan. I believe we moved past that in the last version of this. And Elena, I just want to make sure that we're all looking at the same version and don't want to introduce any newer conflicting information.
No, I had seen the newest.
Oh, fantastic, yes. So we pulled back from a plan entirely, yes.
Yep, 453 or something like that. Okay.
Wonderful. So specifically, you asked me a question related to proposed amendment to 60. 60, as it reads here, is specific to getting the approval of Boston Water and Sewer Commission, which we certainly do not object to. I think the clarification fundamentally was more about delineating between which is Boston Water and Sewer-owned infrastructure, which is water and sewer in this case. And then our stormwater system actually has a direct outfall to the river and does not connect to Boston Water and Sewer infrastructure. So again, no objection, and certainly will be going before Boston Water and Sewer. But from a clarity perspective, DCR's infrastructure at the Esplanade in this location fundamentally goes to an outfall.
Interesting. So Commissioner Sullivan, have you seen the language?
I know, and I was just looking at the emails that had come through. That's the beauty of having a good firewall. You guys can talk.
Can Elena copy and share it for you on the screen?
Sure, sure.
Sorry, I realize that you can't see what I'm doing as I'm doing it, so I'm pulling that language up right now.
Yep. I can see what you're doing, actually.
We've reached that point in Zoom world. I'm going to copy and paste it in the chat. I think that might be.
Oh, good idea.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
I think Condon has put it up in the chat.
He's quick.
Thank you so much.
So again, as note, the modification, which I, obviously, is hard to see in the copied in, just indicates that it relates to Boston Water and Sewer-owned infrastructure where we're making those connections.
Right, and Chairman, what did you want to change on that language?
Well, yeah, so this condition, it's a standard condition that we put in there, and usually it reads, prior to the commencement of work, the applicant must have been to commission staff notice, of the plans for this project. And so do you ever review? I guess the question is, do you ever review plans for non-BWSC-owned infrastructure? So in other words, if there's DCR infrastructure and we are asking them to go in front of you, what is your review? Would you review all of the infrastructure, whether it's state-owned or city-owned, or just BWSC?
We review all of it. In fact, whenever the EDIC, Massport, anybody does stormwater improvements, we don't own those improvements. We don't regulate them with their own permit, but we review and comment on them, and we don't release our plans until we know it works to the specifications we have. Now, whether or not we have authority to do that's a question, but you don't get your water and sewer connections until you make us happy. So you can call that what you will. So in this case, we would look at the, all the issues with the infiltration. It does look like it looks okay. There's a quick little brush on it, but we would comment on those. And they would satisfactorily come back and say, no, it's DCR, they own it. We would question whether there's a permit. You know, we're not the God keepers from permits, but we question everybody. So in this case, if you had the normal language, it would be subject to us approving it. And our comments would say, we, no problem with the water, no problem with the sewer, and we don't own the drainage, but we reviewed it. And that's how, that's how we normally do any of these, and no one cares. I mean, we won't stop things if they, if we said, well, we really would like to have it 10 feet over. We wouldn't do that. We just want it functionally working. You know, again, it's our city. At the end of the day, we all have permits, and we just want to make sure the infiltration's working, phosphorus removal's working, and off we go.
Okay, so could I hone in on that a little bit? So a project comes before you with two sets of infrastructure, one city-owned, one BWSC-owned and one state-owned. Is it fair to say that you would approve BWSC-owned infrastructure and comment on state infrastructure?
Right, so in this case, I think what the difference is, we require you to hold the first inch of water and put it in the ground. And what that in actuality does is it gives us the 65% removal, probably a little more. And it also puts a lot more water back in the groundwater. What they do with the state is they just want to remove their 65%. So a lot of times, their infrastructure will be smaller than if it connected to us. That's a generalized statement. So what they're saying is, we're going to meet the TMDL, which we say, congratulations. If this was connecting to a Boston Water and Sewer pipe, we would not allow this. We would make them give a volumetric holding of one inch of water times the impervious area. But this would be approved because it's meeting the 65%, which is the TMDL. And we might comment on that, and then if you want to hook up to us, you're going to follow our rates, so. But I think the original language takes care of that anyway.
It feels that way to me. I'm going to go down the line real quick here. Commissioner Condon, what do you feel about this? It feels like we should revert back to the original language. Commissioner Herbst? Oh, Commissioner Condon, are you? Oh, okay, thank you. Hand gesture. Commissioner Herbst?
Yeah, I mean, I think we should, should stick with our language. I also, I mean, to me, part of the point is also that functionally, the Boston Water and Sewer Commission review is our review of compliance with the DEP stormwater, right? So, you know, we want that review to happen.
Okay. Okay, so Katie, I think you have the answer on 60.
Would you mind if I just made a quick comment?
Sure, go ahead.
I do want to follow up. The stormwater management system, again, is being designed by the applicant and not by the state. And so it is our intention to follow the intent of Boston Water and Sewer's policy. While we may not be fundamentally required to, it's always been an objective of the project, and our engineer from NITCH here has always worked with the assumption that Boston Water and Sewer will comment on the system. So the policy, you know, we believe certainly is something that we would follow. And I do think we're talking semantics, you know, as it relates to the order between the state's preference and the city's preference. And certainly happy as the applicant to be completely compliant with Boston Water and Sewer.
Fantastic. Okay, yeah, and again, and I don't mean this as a barge, but if something is a matter of semantics, we definitely want to stick with our semantics.
Understood.
Yeah.
And my only comment then to your engineer would be, they would get the impervious area times one inch of rainfall, and there'd be a volume there, X number of cubic feet, and then just show us that the subsurface infiltration system holds that many cubic feet. You know, it's third grade math. Not trying to belittle engineers here, but it's not a killer.
I want to take it personal as an engineer, but we did bring our civil engineer, and so Bill did just turn his camera on. Bill, I think you might want to reply.
Yes, hi, John. You know, Bill from NITCH, and just to let you know, and I guess all of the commission members know, is that we did file this with Boston Water and Sewer back in October. We did get comments back, you know, from Boston Water and Sewer. We have not resubmitted, you know, at this time yet, but we are showing compliance with that one inch of runoff times all of the impervious area on the site. This is why we have our infiltration systems that are interconnected. Here, we've got a basin over to the right side of the building. And for impervious areas, we are including the roof, the walkways and all that. So it does all channel into the systems to meet the TSS standard, to meet the phosphorus standard, and to meet Boston Water and Sewer and DEP standards.
Right, Bill, you know that on the plan, we simply need that, on the, on the plan we sign, the calculation showing the one-inch holding.
And it is noted on the, you know, plan, it was noted on the first submission that we made back in October, you know, John. So it'll always remain there, you know, once it's signed off by Boston Water and Sewer and yourself.
Yep, so I'll just tell you, I'm looking forward to taking a look at this one, Bill. You know, I've just, we should be all set. I'm just saying, with the piece we have up here in front of us right now, we don't accept this type of calc. We just want to see the volumetric because we know it meets all the requirements.
And just to, and, and, you know, John, you know, this image that you're seeing right here, it's not showing that calculation that you, that is requested, but it is on the utility site plan that was submitted to Boston Water and Sewer and commented on. And the subsequent submissions will keep that calculation on there.
Yep.
Great, okay. So Katie, it sounds like you're going to be getting some comments back from us regarding this proposed Order of Conditions. I know DCR is going to have final say or say over this. I don't think you can make any decisions for them. And I know you haven't seen these comments because I finished them up maybe three minutes before we got on. So I don't think that there's any option other than to continue. And hopefully, you're able to work with staff and DCR and get these finalized for the next hearing. That being said, what is the timeline for this project?
Well, you know, obviously, we have been continued a number of times, and this has been procedural between getting an Order of Conditions that everyone's comfortable with. We are working diligently here towards a filing with Waterways on the anticipation that they would love to be constructing this project in fall of this year. So anything the commission can do and the staff can do to support our negotiations through the process here with DCR so that we're at a comfortable level between everyone. I had really hoped we were today, and it seems like maybe we're still a couple of steps apart here, but I think we've made great progress. I would hope that what you're seeing in front of you today has a limited number of further considerations.
Fantastic. So quick question about Daniel, I mean, the Waterway shop. Are they waiting for you to have an Order of Conditions from us before they consider your licensing?
Well, they always appreciate it if we do. They're not holding us up right now at all and are working with us well. But as you know, for the sequence of permits here, obviously, we want to make sure that anything we put in front of them certainly is blessed by the Conservation Commission.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, Elena, do we have any, anybody from the public who wanted to comment?
I'm not seeing any hands up, and we also didn't receive any emails.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Commissioner Condon, it's up to you because Commissioner Sullivan has done all his talking for the evening.
Correct.
Okay. Do you have an audio problem? You okay? Okay, sorry, okay.
Well, listen, just to bail them out, and this won't happen again ever. I second it.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon? Sorry, yep. Thumbs up. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Condon voted aye. Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries for nothing. Okay, sorry, I didn't realize you're having audio problems. Okay, next item on the agenda has been continued because I have recused myself from this matter. We only have four commissioners tonight. With my recusal, that would bring us down to three, which is not a quorum. So this is going to have to be continued. Do we have a motion to continue this hearing? I'm sorry, I need to call it out. So sorry, let me call it out. I'd entertain a motion to continue. Notice of intent for DEP file number 0061957 and Boston file number 2023-047.
So moved, and I second it on behalf of Commissioner Sullivan.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon? With the record reflect, we got an aye from Commissioner Condon. Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And myself, an aye. That's passes for nothing. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a request for an extension for DEP file number 0061572 from Fort Point Associates on behalf of Bayside Club Hotel LLC for the proposed expansion to the existing hotel located at 240 Mount Vernon Street in Dorchester. The resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. Who's here on behalf of the applicant, if anyone?
Hi, my name's Katie Moore. I'm an environmental planner with Fort Point Associates, and I'm joined by Tom Devane, a representative of the applicant.
Okay, great. Did you have any presentation or remarks, or there we are, okay?
We do, yeah. And first, we want to thank the Chair and Commission for their time tonight. So we are here to request an extension of time to the Order of Conditions at the Doubletree Hotel Expansion Project at 240 Mount Vernon Street in Dorchester. Just to provide a bit of an overview, I'm not sure if all of the commissioners were involved with the initial review of this project, but the project involves the construction of an addition to the existing hotel along with improvements and associated parking, landscaped areas, utilities, and stormwater management systems. Next slide, please. So to orient you to where the project site is, this shows the location near the intersection of Mount Vernon Street and Morrissey Boulevard. It's near the entrance of the former Bayside Expo site or the potential Dorchester Bay City site, if folks are familiar with that. The aerial reflects the condition that was submitted in the initial NOI. In general, construction was delayed due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And honestly, the impact of the pandemic on the hotel industry resulted in even the temporary closure of the hotel for a little bit there. So there are some delays associated with that. Next slide. Thank you. So in this more recent aerial image, it shows some of the work that's actually been completed to date. And you can see the work includes, in sort of the light outlined areas, those are the additions' footings and some of the foundation. And other work includes the, the project's been involved in Dorchester Bay City's project review process and how that interacts with this particular site. So over time, there certainly, progress has been being made. Next slide, please. And here, we have the site plan. The existing hotel is within the blue box, and the proposed addition and improvements are within the orange box. And that is the area where work has been progressing so far. And in general, the addition will be approximately just under 7,100 gross square feet. It will net an additional 104 guest rooms and add about 8,400 square feet of meeting space. In addition, there would be a publicly accessible restaurant and lounge on the ground floor towards the Mount Vernon Street side. And there'd be an expanded landscaped area with green space, and I think the open space is something like 31,000 square feet. So just high level of the project there, and with that, Tom and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, great, thank you, Katie. So just to be clear, you're not proposing any additional work? This is merely an extension for the order for the work already approved?
Correct.
Okay, okay. No change conditions?
No, not from what they, I mean, work has obviously progressed over, since we, we saw you originally with the NOI, but it, they're, the site conditions are still the same.
Okay, okay, thank you. Elena, do you have anything on this?
Oh, yeah, just a few notes. So just noting that, yeah, this is the second request for an extension, and staff conducted a site visit on the 1st of February. We also noted that there wasn't a DEP file number onsite. However, we've received a photo of the sign and will also receive confirmation when the sign is installed onsite. So we'll be able to log that in the file for the project as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan, what do you have?
Were you required to get an NPDS permit? It was at an acre or more, and has that expired?
I don't recall that one off the top of my head, but all of the permits that we were originally issued have been, they're still all valid. I do believe we do have an NPDS permit. Actually, Tom, can you speak to that one? I think you were the one who filed that. Well, I saw them on here. Tom, are you muted maybe?
Sorry, Katie, I don't remember. I'd have to go back and look at my records.
Okay.
Yeah, and so my only comment would be, would you look at the records? And if you haven't, you know, renewed that, or I'm not sure when that would have run out, just make sure you get it because we are responsible for chasing you down to make sure that the federal permit works. I mean, it's their permit, but they dumped it on us to chase you down.
Yes, if I recall correctly, I believe the Massachusetts general permit for that expired a year or two ago, and we did submit for an extension of that permit. So if it's the one I'm thinking of, it is still valid.
Yeah, so this would be a construction permit. It's, but it has to be, I believe it's an acre or more. So are you an acre or more, perhaps my first question that you're digging up?
The project site is a whole, or the entire site is, so I believe that we would be.
Yeah, so if you could just check on that tomorrow. And if there's any questions, call my office and we'll chase it down with you. But that was my only comment, to make sure we're covering that also.
Commissioner Sullivan, um, am I to understand that EPA has delegated, um. The authority to oversee, uh, NITD's construction permits to BWSC?
Yeah. What they've done, anything in Boston, we're responsible to make sure that people file for it. Before we give them an okay. And we're responsible to go out and check to make sure that all the, um, provisions required under that permit. Are being, um, upheld. It's, it's, we fought, we didn't want it. This isn't something we said, please give us some more work. Uh, but as part of a consent decree, we agreed to do it.
Oh, I was hoping that you had an MOU where you were getting compensated, but it sounds like, um. This is an enforcement matter with the CD. Okay. Never mind.
Yeah. Well, we're getting compensated. I'm not in jail, so that's a plus.
Yeah, yeah.
You know how that works.
Okay. Good for us. Um, Commissioner Condon, did you want to, um, do you have any comments in the chat?
Are you able to hear me, Chip Parker?
Yes, there we go.
Great. All right. So sorry about the trouble earlier. I did some troubleshooting and that seems to have worked. Um, now my only question was, is this a second extension or?
Yes, this is a, a request for a second extension. Yeah. A- as I mentioned, it, unfortunately with the timing of the pandemic, that did not do any favors to the hotel industry. And so yes, this is a second, uh, uh, request with the idea that this would ideally be the last time we are asking for an extension.
Well, but you're not sure, right? I guess you can't be.
I mean, I, I can't foresee if there's some issues i- to the, uh, hotel industry in the future, but I mean. Uh, the intention is certainly to, to move forward at this point.
Great. Thank you. Let's answer.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Eleanor, did we get any raised hands from the public?
I'm not seeing any raised hands and nothing in our inbox either.
Okay. So with that, I would entertain a motion to extend this order of conditions for an additional three years.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that carries for nothing. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay. Uh, there's been a number of continuances continued, um, are. Uh, notice of intent for DEP file number zero, zero, six, one, seven, zero, four, and Boston file number twenty, twenty dash zero, zero, seven. DEP file number zero, zero, six, one, seven, seven, two, and Boston file number twenty, twenty-one dash zero, one, zero. DEP file number zero, zero, six, one, nine, six, one, and Boston file number twenty, twenty-three dash zero, five, one. And that's it. Um, the commission will now begin its regular meeting. First item, um, on the agenda for the regular meeting is requests for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero, zero, six, one, five, four, seven. For the improvements to Henderson Boathouse located at thirteen forty-five Soldiers Field Road in Brighton. Um, resource areas are riverfront area and one hundred foot buffer to inland bank. Eleanor, what do you, what do you have on this?
Yeah. So we conducted a site visit on the first of February. Uh, everything seemed to be, uh, the way it should be. Uh, nothing was left out. Uh, construction was complete and we included some photos in the drive folder. Apologies for the late upload on those, but, um, they're in the drive folder for the commission to review if they would like. Um, and other than that, everything seems good to go. So staff would recommend, uh, issuing the COC for this work.
Okay. Um, any questions from any commissioners?
Nope.
Okay. So that I would, uh, entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero, zero, six, one, five, four, seven.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I thought, uh, okay. Um, next item on the agenda, administrative updates.
Yes. So, uh, an exciting update that is coming a bit, uh, delayed. We apologize for this, but, uh. We are asking the commission to vote to actually accept the parcel transfer, uh, for the Matahun parcels, which we had discussed, uh, quite a few months ago at this point. So just as a reminder, they're located on Alabama Street and Colorado Street in Matapan. We've included the parcel ID numbers and, uh, they, the transfer is from the mayor's office of housing to the care, custody and control of the Boston Conservation Commission for conservation purposes. Uh, we also have a few slides just indicating again on the map where, uh, where these parcels are.
Okay.
Uh, I had a, I had a question on, on that, uh, Eleanor. So I know they were cleaning up the area. So we got rid of trash, litter, debris, et cetera. If in two years that gets all kinds of debris, et cetera, put on it illegally. Who's responsible to go in there and clean it up?
On the, on these new parcels that the, the commission is acquiring?
Yeah.
Uh, so I believe that that would be between the commission and, um, potentially because of the urban wild. It, it could also be the urban wilds team. So that would be something that we'd be coordinating. That's my understanding.
Right. But you know, given that unless you two want to go out there with a bunch of black bags and pick up the stuff with gloves and all. I just wonder when physically you gotta pick stuff up and physically you gotta dump it somewhere. Who does that?
That might be a better question for the urban wilds team and I can check in on how they usually manage that type of issue. I know that sometimes there are also partnerships between the city. Um, I, I know that for example at, I think it's Rosendale Wetlands. They recently had, um, a, a trash pickup. Um, and so there are also ways of engaging community groups or just members of the community who live, uh, close by. But I can definitely get more information on sort of, um, specific, uh, procedures.
Yeah. I'm just curious how it works. That's all.
Oh, of course. Yeah.
So Eleanor, oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Condon.
Um, yeah, thank you, sir. Um, it's, um, in general, you know, it'd be good to know whenever. Um, a parcel is acquired, what the maintenance plan is because it will take some capacity to take care of it. Commissioner Sullivan brought up trash cleanup, but there may be a lot more than that to do. And is it just kind of an assumption that the current capacity of the urban wilds team is enough? Or is it an assumption that there can be some creativity and including volunteers in the community? Or should this be a more deliberate plan? I'd just be more comfortable seeing a plan when running on.
Of course, understood. So, um, I think that when, uh, considering that this is part of, uh, a larger project that's currently in the works. To, uh, try to have some improvements in, um, in Matahun Woods. One of the, one of the larger elements of that is that we've noted, the city has noticed that, uh, when areas are cleaned up. And when there are more deliberate paths that are created, that also reduces dumping. So one of the sort of hopes for this improvement in this area is that. Uh, after the cleanup is done and there's signage and there are these pads and, and there's more people using the area, that'll, um, sort of inherently reduce waste, which is a, a great side effect of this. Um, but I, I completely understand, uh, the, the question about having a more, a more concrete management plan. And I can, uh, work on getting that. I can talk to either, uh, Kat McCandless for this site in particular. And I can, I can check in with Urban Wiles as well on, um, what the sort of, uh, I guess more, yeah, more concrete deliberate maintenance plan is for, for these areas.
Thank you.
Commissioner Herbst, did you have any, any comments?
Yeah, just a couple. I, um, thank you for this. It's exciting. I, and I, I think this, I, I'm sorry that, um, Commissioner Long isn't here today. Cause I, um, it, it would be a good conversation to have with him, uh, I think, uh, about sort of. What the needs are and, and what's happening now. I know that I participated in a volunteer cleanup event here some, sometime back. And I just had a curiosity question because I see the outline of the urban wilds in black. I'm curious about the properties that are not green or yellow, but appear to be in the urban wilds, whether they're under some other ownership. Or, or what that means.
Yeah, there are some properties in there that, um, are. Under private ownership still, um, and so they're sort of within the boundaries of the urban wild, um. But have not been acquired by the city, which is kind of a, a, an interesting sort of middle ground state to be in. Uh, yeah.
And the three that are outside of the, and, and maybe this is a question more for the urban wilds. I was curious about the three properties that are not currently inside the urban wild, uh, outline what, what the thinking is about those.
Right. And I can, uh, that's a question that I can also check with Kat McCandless on, on, since she's point on the project. But, um, I, my understanding is that, uh, it would. Kind of be brought into the urban wild in a sense, um, and, uh, but I can, I can check with her to make sure that that is the, the plan.
Yeah, I guess it would actually connect across this, the paper street there. Um, anyway, I think it would, um, if there's a time when our agenda isn't overwhelming, it, it would be really interesting to hear more about. Our holdings and plans for them, but it's, it's typical that conservation commissions. Don't end up having a lot of time to deal with the property ownership side of things. So be, be nice to do it somewhere. Thanks.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. That was my question about the three parcels that are outside there. So I do remember over in Rosendale, um. We did something with MOH and Habitat for Humanity, actually rehabbed, um. A multifamily, one or two over there. I can't remember the name of the street. It was a pretty exciting project. Um, Commissioner Herbst, um, you'll be glad to know that, um, your work, I think I was with you on that cleanup. Um, the environment department actually has a picture of us, actually. Well. Let me put it this way. They have a picture of me standing and talking to you while you're working, um, which is pretty. Um, but so your, your efforts are definitely recognized. Um, and it's a lot of fun. Um, we should do that in the spring with the other commissioners. Um, it's good to get out and see what our holdings are and actually, um, I thought it was very, quite a learning experience, actually. What was really surprising to me, um. Is how, um, neighbors, uh, like to use these properties, uh, either to encroach upon or to dump. Which is like, was very surprising to me. Uh, so they do need a lot of care, um. Especially when they're vacant like that. So, okay. So, um, Eleanor, if you want to go back to the original slide, uh, we've been through this drill before. I have to read off all the numbers. Um, for the vote, uh, to make it official. So, okay, good. Um, so with that, I would entertain a motion to accept, uh, parcel transfer for the following parcels. Located on Alabama Street and Colorado Street in Matapan. Uh, their parcel identification numbers are one, eight, zero, two, six, two, two, zero, zero, zero. Parcel number one, eight, zero, two, six, one, five, zero, zero, zero. Parcel number one, eight, zero, two, six, zero, six, zero, zero, zero. Parcel number one, eight, zero, two, eight, two, eight, zero, zero, zero. Parcel number one, eight, zero, two, eight, two, nine, zero, zero, zero. And parcel number one, eight, zero, two, eight, three, zero, 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 zero. From the mayor's off of housing, office of housing to the care, custody and control of the Boston Conservation Commission for conservation purposes.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
Uh, and I vote aye. That carries for nothing. That's great. Um. Next two items. Oh, Eleanor, anything else on administrative updates?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Great. Well, that was enough. That's great news. Um, okay. Uh, next item, acceptance of orders of conditions, uh, because, oh. Not surprising. These both involve DCR, uh, orders of conditions. Uh, they'll be continued. Uh, notice of intent for DEP file number zero, zero, six, one, nine, five, eight, and Boston file number twenty, twenty-three dash zero, four, eight. And also DEP file number zero, zero, six, one, nine, two, eight, and Boston file number twenty, twenty-three dash zero, one, eight. Um, last item on the agenda are the acceptance of the meeting minutes from the June seventh, twenty, twenty-three and January seventeenth, twenty, twenty-four hearings. Um, I reviewed the, uh, both sets of minutes, uh, have made some changes. Uh, so, uh, I think they're good to go. Uh, if there are no other questions, I'd entertain a motion to accept. The meeting minutes from June seventh, twenty, twenty-three and January seventeenth, twenty, twenty-four.
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
Uh, and I vote aye. So that carries for nothing. Um, it's quarter of seven. I almost feel guilty, like we didn't. We're not earning our pay here. It's not midnight. So, um. Oh, Alice just said something. There is an event.
Oh.
Oh, on Saturday. Oh, fantastic. Good. Thank you, Alice.
It's gonna be warm out Saturday. So you're gonna be in good shape. That's a good.
Yeah. If they, um. You, uh, Commissioner Sullivan, didn't you mean we?
I said, no, you heard me, you.
It, um, do, do any of the staff know if the path around the wilds is complete? Is that, this is? It is, Alice says. Thank you.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, the Coniston Road, Coniston Road entrance. Okay, good. Thank you. Maybe we'll see you there. What time's it start? It's three hours? Nine to twelve. Okay. Fantastic. Um, so with that, um, anybody object to adjourn?
If we must.
Hearing no objections, uh, good night and, uh, thank you. Take care.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you all.